The following program is sponsored by The Greek. Ely's Radio Shack Theater at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, June 23rd, 2021.
Yeah. Just confused me, I was a drafty one. Okay. Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, June 23rd regular schedule of White Pine County Commission Meeting. Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge? And Lori, why don't you read this?
All right, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as is normal, we're going to take the first moment of the meeting for silence, meditation, prayer, whatever you'd like. And Commissioner Bulwark will not be with us today. So what you see is what you get. So the first one, let's see you guys. Okay, we'll start with the first item on the agenda, which is public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone, Mike? Anyone out there?
No.
Okay. Anybody in the audience want to public comment? Anyone that's up to state? George, go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the County Commission Meeting held on June 4th, 2021, I reported the safety guard raiding that was removed from Murray Creek Overflood Ditch a month behind the gazebo barbecue stands. And now the new Veterans Park sign needs to be replaced. There's a falling hazard in that area and it needs to be addressed before someone gets hurt. In particular, older people, they may suffer a broken hip. The guard raiding there was for years, I mean, was there for years and was taken out. Now that we have the Vietnam War Memorial Traveling Institute coming at the end of the end month, through the 4th of July, we'll have larger crowds, greater liability in that area. There's no need to risk injury, those coming to the parks for the holiday. Mr. Chairman, on your Agenda Item C2B, the Commission is to consider resolution 2021-46 to utilize $1,931 to cover end ratings on the grandstands at the Beagle Walpark to provide public safety. I'm asking for similar consideration for the Veterans Park Guard Rail. You can address one, you can address this, or you're going to have larger crowds. Mr. Chairman, on your Agenda Item C2STUV, the county does not need a county magistrate. If you go forward with this, the county needs to eliminate at least two county positions. The county is too top-heavy now as it is with administration. You've got to take a long, hard look at that. How much do you expect the taxpayer to pay for? Mr. Chairman, on your Agenda Item C2O, you're to consider a resolution 2021-44 to augment the building and funding special revenue fund to cover overtime for the Regional Planning Commission. Mr. Chairman, I've tried approximately eight times to get a permit, direct upon a notice that I got on a piece of property that I own. The inspector repeatedly tells me he's busy, he'll give back to me. All I want is the same consideration that is given to others. I'm not getting it. Is the overtime for the inspector or the secretary? I wanted to review a memo that I gave the Planning Commission back on August 19th, also September 16th, also October 21st, 2021, to Planning Commission. Planning Commission City Hall is not addressed the city code violations by previous and present members of the Planning Commission, as well as some of the city councilmen and county commission. They need to comply with city codes that they have formulated and adopted or resigned. City Hall and White Pine County cannot selectively enforce the law. They have to be compliant with federal law, in particular, the Age Discrimination Act of 1975, the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, and the Civil Rights Act of 1964 Title VI. Not happening. Time and time again, I've gone to those people, I've given them discrepancies, have been ignored. Here you have a commissioner that's blocking the sidewalk. City Councilman doing business, no business license, no special use permit.
George, three minutes.
I can hear a ding, I'm still going.
I just got signal.
That's only two from our side. I need some answers, Mr. Chairman. I keep coming back here and I'm getting a stone wall. Is the State Senator coming over there?
I just, yeah, he's on his way, I believe. I just texted him to see if he was on his way. He hasn't. See if he's... I don't see him coming. I talked to him yesterday, so he might be helping up on the road. But, so Pete was at 9:00 AM.
We can take the other nine.
Yeah. So we're going to go ahead and move forward to the other 9:00 AM, which is... We will get back to Pete when he gets here. So on page two, Item B, is a 9:00 AM public hearing. Discussion only, the White Pine County Board of Commissioners intent to lease the following described county-owned real property to the University of Nevada Reno pursuant to NRS 244.2833, exclusive use of two office spaces and an optional third office space within the White Pine County Library, and an off-site storage area, and a non-exclusive right to the use of the library restrooms and other library facilities intended to be used for the public. This is a public hearing, do we have anything, any public comment out there? Mike, do you see anything, anybody want to speak to that?
And Councilman, I can give a brief description of what we're... There's... Sorry. Chairman. I'm going to give a brief description of the, what we're intending to do, and then we can take up a comment after that. So essentially, this is a continuation of our last lease agreement. The only real material change is that the last agreement had three offices. As everybody knows, we're down an educator. So this one leases them two offices. It has, in cooperation with Phil Collerwood, we have moved some of their storage space closer to here so they can store the items in that third office to store it in their own storage space that they have moved next to this building. In the event that we get an educator, then it automatically kicks in that third office. They get that third office. All the other conditions are pretty much the same. I think that the length of the lease is longer. Originally, it was one year, we did it three years because we have to go through something who's upstate just to make a little long lease. So if anybody has any comments or questions.
Anybody, is there anyone on the phone with any comments? Or this is a public hearing, anybody in the building? George, you got anything to add to this?
No, it's nice to see Christians coming back to the community.
Thank you. Okay, so no commissioner has anything else to add, so we're just going to move on to Item Two. Pete just walked in the door, so he'll be here in a minute. Item Two is discussion for possible action, the approval of resolution 2021-50, declaring that it is in the best interest of the county to lease certain portions of White Pine County Library to the University of Nevada Reno for less than market value pursuant to NRS 244.2833.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous? Item Three is discussion for possible action, the approval of a lease agreement between White Pine County Nevada and the Board of Regents with the Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of the University of Nevada Cooperative Extension for two office spaces, one additional office space, and the 4H storage shed. Effective on the date the last signing party signs the agreement and terminating on June 30th, 2024, as per the terms listed in the lease agreement. Anybody got any questions on this? This is a commission item, so I'll vote for motion to approve.
Move.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous? I just saw Pete walk in. I guess we'll get to that real quick.
Here are consent and on-time amendments.
Okay, let's go back to the last page, page nine. Actually, page eight. Item Three is a consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I have a quick question regarding consent agenda. And not knowing normally they're in the consent agenda where the commission has agreed to forward or to write some letters. I get to see one in regards to support of the NNRDA, and I haven't seen one from the last commission meeting in support of Bellers Camp. I didn't know who that was even going to go to. So just...
That NNRDA letter was attached, was backed up to the last agenda item letter. Writing that letter?
I'm so sorry. My apologies.
I don't think, I was given direction to write a letter, but I certainly...
I didn't think so either, and that's why I brought that back. So, and I don't know who was even going to go to.
Any... Where's Johnson? He is in Mr. Bull.
Okay, so sorry.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous? Pete's there, so we'll just take one last item. It's on page nine. Untimed items. Item A is discussion for possible action, the approval of the request to use the back roads to line up the Non-Pioneer Sempera Parade Parade. Christiane Griffin. Is she on the phone?
She's not. She talked with Martin Trout and just changed the verbiage on this item from the last time. So they're not diverting traffic onto the back county route roads. They're just going to stop it on the main road and their request is to use the county roads to line up the parade itself before it commences on the main road. So she needs this approval for the parade.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. And the last one we'll do is Item B on page nine. Discussion for possible action, the approval for the minutes of the County Commission Meetings held May 26th, 2021, and a special joint meeting on June 4th, 2020. Any additions, corrections, or subtractions?
Motion to approve, May 26th, and special joint meeting at June 4th.
Motion by Lori?
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay, we'll go back to our first item and we'll welcome Pete. Pete is in the building, so we're back to 9:00 AM. Item One is a discussion update on the 2021 legislating session from Senator Pete Gobishia. Welcome, Pete.
Well, good morning. Sorry, I didn't think about the pilot line between here and Eureka, so got stopped twice. So kind of shortened it up a little bit. I apologize for being late, but it's good to see you all this morning. And I don't know, we haven't got much to discuss. It was quite a session, I don't mind telling you that through the 81st legislative session. I've never seen one that was quite so partisan. And I think it reflected in the end, as far as the legislation that did come forward. You know, realistically, I don't think there were over 20 Republican bills of 1,200 that actually passed. It was that bad. Most of the Democratic bills, most of them we worked on, amended them, and tried to get them where you can at least hold your nose and vote for them. And so we did make some changes in them in the end, but it was... Where it was mostly virtual, didn't open up until the last couple of weeks. It was tough, it was a very difficult session for us legislators. I think we're seeing a lot of legislators on both sides of the aisle. Our, and I'm probably going to be here in a minute because I did turn it off while you started talking.
Sorry.
But anyway, a lot of legislators, a number of them are turned out and leaving. Others are just saying they're not coming back. And that's pretty normal at the end of the session. Almost everybody's fed up and not coming back, but this time they're... Some good senators like Zeria Ratty, others Sparks, you know, I work well with her. She reaches across, she says she's not coming back. And it was that bad. So I'll just get into a few of the bills that are interesting here in White Pine County. And we can start, I guess, with SB 87, which was near and dear to a lot of people here in White Pine County and that was a transfer of the Railroad Museum to the Rail Foundation. And I go, we got one hearing on it, and it was stopped by the governor. And I think it very clear, even in the end, when we were talking, the end game on 495, I asked if I could be added to it, you know, the passage of 87 and for a vote on 495, which is a money tax bill, and I'll get into that a little bit. But anyway, and the governor went in my office and said, no. Wouldn't even be considered, it was an offstart. So I don't know why he was so dead set against the transfer, but clearly it was. And he wasn't going to have that happen. Then we'll move right to 495, which is, was a money tax bill. And I went, oh, and there was no doubt. I was offered $50 million for a new school in White Pine County by the governor. If I would vote for 495, of course I wouldn't, I couldn't. I was voting for Senate Bill 462, which was, would allow for a nonpartisan commission of three members to redraw the maps for redistricting reapportionment. I think that's critical if we're ever going to have any representation for the people in the state, across the state, and just along those lines. I'm really concerned, you know, yesterday we were at IFC, and we put 2.7 billion in a discretionary fund for the governor that will be administered by IFC, and this is CARES Act money. And I don't know where this money's going, but when we get to the end of this, so it's going to... Next year sometime, I'm thinking we're going to have a hell of a hangover. There's going to be some repercussions to the money, the way we're spending it. But again, 2.7 billion dollars yesterday. We just put it in discretionary fund. I'm sure Elizabeth would love to have access to that. And I guess he'll just spend it where he wants, and IFC rubber stamp it or approve it to wherever we're going. IFC Interfinance Committee met 21 times last interim, and they anticipate breaking that record this interim. So technically, we're going to be meeting once every three weeks. There's 21 of us, and we are a de facto legislature. And along those lines, definitely partisan, and they will be able to spend the money any way they want, any way they want. And so my concern is, I'm really concerned, and I'll bring you to the next piece of this. I know I may be talking a little too fast, and it's probably very confusing, but I do believe that the average guy that gets up in the morning, goes to work, is making his house payments, making his car payments, are not represented across the nation. Not just in this state, but I think across the nation. And I really believe we're going to see a hangover when we get done. There's going to be a lot of people that have, maybe even got somewhat wealthy with this pandemic and some of the programs, and especially some of the minorities are going to do very well. There's no bad about it, especially if you're low income. I think you're going to do fairly well. But the average citizen in this nation or in this state, the guy that's like, say, getting up in the morning and he's making these car payments, making these house payments. He's going to wake up a year from now and say, what the hell happened? I'm not any better off, I'm probably worse off, and place is going to eat us up. And the bottom line is, I'm hoping they'll, at that point, they'll start looking at... They may be making some changes where actually the average citizen in this state actually has a say in the government. But at this point, it's really scary, it's beyond scary, is what happened there. We passed some very bad legislation, so bad that a lot of those bills won't take effect until 2025, just because there was no way you could put them in place and get the people to follow them. So they just, effectively, date 2025. That will give us a chance to deal with them in the next legislative session, if we do have some paradigms. We can hope that maybe we will have a different governor, maybe a few more votes in the legislature, but it's going to be problematic. So that'll bring me to the next thing, and I talked to Richard a little bit about this. Talked to a number of counties across the state. Mechanically, it looks like there might be the ability, and again, we'll reach out to your DAs. Other DAs are going to do the same thing. Mechanically, I believe the Board of County Commissioners can put a county office on the ballot. Any county office. You can put a constable, a weed drover, a GID. You can put those, that person on the ballot. So, collecting to a number of counties. I'm hopeful that we can have the counties put a county state senator on their ballot. And we would, in fact, elect him across, hopefully we'd get 17, but at least 15 counties would elect a state senator. I talked to legal about it, and clearly it will be litigated. That's the response, and we know that, because we would have to turn over Baker versus Carr, Rems versus Sims, some of those Supreme Court cases, we'll have to overturn those. But again, elect them, and then sue the legislature to seat them. And that's going to bring the litigation. And again, I believe we have to get to that point where the average citizen in the state, just like they do on the federal level, smaller states do have two senators. So smaller counties, in this case, would have one senator and have some representation. And even under, you know, Rems versus Sims, Everett Dirksen, you know, that was way back in the 60s. He cited, this will happen. You will have large municipalities actually taking over states with one man, one vote. So I think we've got to push back on it. It's a wild thought. I know there's another movement out there by the Constitutional Chair, Senator Paul Spivak, today this morning. But, you know, that's another huge movement. I think it's a little farther of a reach. But anyway, I think the middle class is starting to push back a little bit, and we're going to have to have some representation in the state. Or ultimately, Clark County will be in control and will be the sandbox. And then it'll get worse and worse. We're seeing that even IFC meetings or whatever, that's the first... How come Clark only got 30% or 70% of the population? And they gradually will try, so... In one case, yesterday, it's kind of interesting, there is 120 million in the CARES Act money to help homeowners that are upside down in their homes or having problems making their house payments well. And there's supposed to be a $55,000 cap on it. But there was a case where this guy was upside down $100,000. And I'm saying in a year, he's upside down $100,000. That means $8,000 a month. So he was clearly in over his head. When he started, he should have just, you know, we get foreclosed, when you make a bad business deal, you lose. But the state's handling him out for $100,000 in a home that he clearly shouldn't have been in. So that guy's doing fine, he got $100,000 ticket. But you get some guy down the street that's maybe $3,000 or $4,000 behind, and he doesn't have access, he's not going to get paid. So it's really wild what's going on with the CARES money. And of course, you know, counties are the same way, school districts. Hey, you know, it's... Get in line, hold your hand up, you know, it's money. But there will be an end to it. And I'm afraid when that end comes, it's going to be problematic. So with that, I'll ask, open up for questions. I know there were a ton of bills, like I say, not many good bills in my mind that got out, but I had a couple of them, like I say, I felt bad that we didn't get 495, the override for the school. Ultimately, ended up on the desk, in the assembly, passed both houses. Both committees, both houses, but went to the desk. I knew what the governor didn't like that. And then he was trying to use us to negotiate. And I do feel badly that I couldn't say, yeah, we'll have the middle school across the street. But I learned a long time ago, a good friend of mine and my mentor, Sean Carpenter, told me, never settle a vote. If you do, you're doomed. And I've never been able to break myself to trade for one, but, you know, I told him what my line was. And 495, the mining tax, mining wanted it, Jamie clearly wanted it. Bottom line, I think it's going to be very short-lived. I'd be surprised if we don't see those initiatives back on the ballot within six years. I think they just lock the board for a short term.
With that, all of the questions. Anyone have a question for Pete right now? I've got two. What's the makeup of the IFC? You've got 22 members, what's...
21.
21? What is it, Democratic?
Well, it's right on party lines. There's four of us from the Senate.
Four.
And Republicans from the Senate, from the Senate, and there's... So there's five from the Democratic side. And the ballots are Assembly, and I think there's four also from the Assembly. And there's six from the Democratic side. We're the minority. We can't control it.
The other question I had, we spoke about the Senate seat, possibly one per county. What if one county or two counties say, don't vote for it, and you got 15 that say yes? Can that be drafted?
Well, I think if it was only one, it would be just crazy. We wouldn't be near as strong, and then that one county would have to bear the... I'm telling these guys, since I've talked to them, and I have talked to the guys. Talk to the ones like Lander and Eureka that's got some bucks, because somebody's going to have to fund its lawsuit. And make sure we get them on board. You know, there are other counties like Lincoln and Hasmeralda, clearly they're on board. They want to play, but they'd have a very hard time coming up with any amount of money to fund. You know, we're talking a million dollar lawsuit or more. But again, I think that's something we have to... And I'm hoping that there'll be enough pushback when we get to... The way I see it happening, we'll deal with reapportionment, we'll do a special session in November. So, and then I think we'll know what the lines have become, look at how bad it's going to get. And, you know, what the chances of ever having even... I think they'll take away the chances of even having a super minority in both houses. So you won't be able to stop even a two-thirds bill. I think we lose that with reapportionment. So what we're going to do is we'll end up, I would say, wait till we see reapportionment. At that point, we hope the counties will look at it and go ahead and... You, as a clerk, know full well, I believe you can do it. Mechanically, we're looking at it, and I think it can happen. And then you would just put that office on your ballot for the following November. And, you know, the legislature, you are seated as a legislator the day after your election. It's not like you don't wish to sworn in, you were actually take your office the day after the election. So the day after November, whatever it is, of '22, there would be whatever there is, 14, 15, I hope 17, county senators. And then the counties would, in fact, sue the legislature to seat them. While that isn't going to happen, but that suit would kick off. And it could be a couple of years down the road, but it's a wild idea, but I think we're in hard times. And I think enough, and I did see Washoe coming in. Maybe in all fairness, even Clark, because it's about the equity to the people.
Anyone else? I really appreciate you coming, Pete.
That's too much windshield time, that's what happens. Any other?
Do you want a water?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I just had a question, Senator. The commission had brought it up before to Division of Water Resources about Cape Lake. And it's just like, it just seems so stalled.
No.
Yeah, the money's been appropriated to rebuild that. Yes, it has been done. Yeah, there's $10 million that came from both handout and the state budget to do that one.
Thank you.
So...
Anyone else? Anybody on the phone got a question for the Senator? None, Mike? No, hearing none, seeing none. Pete, again, George has a question.
Oh, George.
Yes, sir. Pete, I lost on access to a piece of property I own on Great Basin Boulevard with this new construction. And I'd like to talk to you later on, if you would have the time.
Oh, sure, I'll be here. And one other thing I want to say, you're kind of cussing right through town here, but thank you, Kate Marshall, for doing that. I'm sure it's making it a lot easier to be a business here in Ely with all the work that's going on. And like I say, duck the cones and in and out. But again, the governor didn't really care for that either, but there is a God. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, we'll move on now to the 9:30. We are right in there, thank you. 9:30, page two, Item C, is a special joint County Commission Meeting and Fire Commission Meeting. First, I'll recess the County Commission Meeting and open the Fire Commission Meeting. And the first... And the first item in the Fire Commission Meeting would be public comment. It's the General County Commission Fire Commission. Right.